Okay, Mr. Chairman, you're free to begin the meeting.
Thank you. Good afternoon. My name is Chris Leek and I'm the Chair of the City County Planning Board. I now call to order the November 12, 2020 meeting, which will be conducted remotely. Due to the state of emergency, all planning board members are also participating remotely. I would now ask our Planning Director, Aaron King, to call the roll.
George Bryan?
Here.
Melinda Donegan?
Here.
Jason Grubbs?
Here.
Tommy Hicks? I don't see Mr. Hicks with us. Clarence Lamb?
Here.
Chris Leek?
Here.
Bo McCray?
Here.
Brenda Smith?
Here.
Jack Steelman? I think Mr. Steelman is absent as well.
When there is a vote, a roll call vote will be conducted. Each board member will be recognized and asked to clearly state their vote for the record. All guests participating in this remote meeting, either through Zoom or by phone, will remain muted until recognized by the board for common. Today's meeting is being broadcast live on TV 13 and is also being livestreamed on the city's website. The meeting will also be replayed on TV 13 tomorrow morning at 10:00 a.m. and Sunday at 4:00 p.m. Our first order of business today will be the consent agenda. These are items of which the petitioner is requesting withdrawal or continuance, or items from which staff has recommended approval and no one has signed up to speak in opposition. For our public hearings today, each side will have a total of 12 minutes. There is no rebuttal period. Once you have been recognized by the board, staff will unmute your microphone so that you can provide your comments. After the public hearing is closed and the board goes into work session, no one is permitted to speak unless the planning board asks them a question. The items under Section B of our agenda will require final action by the elected body, either the City Council or County Commissioners. As such, both taking today are recommendations which are cons- site will be developed. If you are addressing the board today, we would ask that before you begin your comments, please give us your name, address, and zip code for the record. Our first item of business is the approval of the minutes of the October 8th and October 22nd meetings. Are there any additions or correction? Is there a motion?
Move approval, Clarence.
Motion by Mr. Lamb is there second? Second by Mr. Bryan?
Yes.
Any further discussion? Mr. King, would you please call the roll?
George Bryan?
Yes.
Melinda Donegan?
Yes.
Jason Grubbs? Yes. Mr. Hicks, I don't believe is still here. Clarence Lamb?
Yes.
Chris Leek?
Yes.
Bo McCray?
Yeah.
Brenda Smith? Brenda, you might be muted.
Yes.
There we go.
Apologize.
Alright.
Thank you. I'm now going to recognize Desmond Corley for our consent agenda at this time.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'm going to share my screen and get it started. I don't have the capability to share my screen. Brian, if you can give me the ability to do that, I'll go ahead and get the... There we go. Thank you. Is everybody seeing my presentation screen?
Yes.
Are you seeing the full page slide or the presentation view?
Presentation view.
That is not good. Alright. Let's do... I apologize, this is not usually what happens.
That's correct now.
Which one are you seeing now?
Now it's about the presentation.
How about this?
There we go.
That's right.
Okay. Apologize for that technical difficulty, that technical delay. Just want to remind the board that all of the items under Section B of the agenda require two motions, one for consistency with the comprehensive plan and one for the actual recommendation to the elected body. First item on consent was continued from the October meeting. This is W 3448. Request to rezone about .59 acre from RS9 to LBL. This is north of the intersection of Old Greensboro Road and Harvest Drive, adjacent to the Commons of Forsyth County property that was rezoned a few months ago. This request, it's a limited use request, so we don't have a proposed site plan. The limitations include a restriction on the uses that are proposed to be allowed and some conditions related to access from Harvest Drive as well as landscaping on Harvest Drive. The request would bring the zoning of this property in line with its use and the proposed uses are less intense than those that currently occupy the site, so staff recommends approval of this request. I'll be glad to answer any questions.
Yes, Mr. Corley.
Yes.
I just had a question. It's just kind of trying to understand your thought process in regards to the area plan. So since this is non-conforming and I thought I read that the area plan had recommended that... Or am I correct in this, that they weren't recommending that this be rezoned to commercial? Or are you saying that because this, they should be looked at case by case? In this case, you are coming to the judgment that it is consistent to rezone here?
Yes, our discussion basically was that these should be... These should be considered case by case and in this particular instance, it makes sense to allow property to be rezoned for commercial uses that are less intense than the uses that currently exist on the site. There isn't really a viable residential use of that location just with the way that the lot size and how it's situated in the context of the area. We thought that allowing commercial rezoning here was appropriate so long as the uses were not intense.
Okay, thank you very much.
Mr. Corley. Has this property been continuously used as unconforming or non-conforming?
Yes, it has. I don't remember off the top of my head when, but we recently received affidavits from the property owner verifying that this property has been used as such for the past several years.
Okay.
Are there any other questions for staff? Okay. I will now open the public hearing. Mr. King, do we have anyone here to speak on this matter?
Mr. Chairman, I don't think we have anybody signed up to speak on this matter.
Alright, then I'm going to close the public hearing. What is the pleasure of the board?
Mr. Chairman, this is Clarence. I move that the planning board find that their request is consistent with the comprehensive plan.
It's motion by Mr. Lamb. Is there a second?
Second.
Jason Grubbs.
Second by Mr. Grubbs. Mr. King, any further discussion? Mr. King, please call the roll.
George Bryan?
Yes.
Melinda Donegan?
Yes.
Jason Grubbs?
Yes.
Clarence Lamb?
Yes.
Chris Leek?
Yes.
Bo McCray?
Yeah.
Brenda Smith?
Yes.
Alright.
And, Mr. Chairman, this is Clarence. I move that the planning board recommend approval of W 3448.
That's motion by Mr. Lamb. Is there a second?
Second. Jason Grubbs.
Second by Mr. Grubbs. Any discussion? Mr. King, would you please call the roll?
George Bryan?
Yes.
Melinda Donegan?
Yes.
Jason Grubbs?
Yes.
Clarence Lamb?
Yes.
Chris Leek?
Yes.
Bo McCray?
Yeah.
Brenda Smith?
Yes.
Alright, thank you.
Alright, Mr. Chairman, the next item is B2. I believe we have some people signed up to speak on this case, so this will actually be removed from the consent agenda. We'll be hearing from Gary later. So the next item on consent is B3. This is a site plan amendment a little more than one acre on the north side of Waltham Street between Reynolds Forest Drive and Salem Lake Road. Subject property is highlighted here in yellow. It's currently a barber shop. The proposed changes are essentially a building addition which is shown here in hatching. This building addition, some improvements to the main entrance here. I believe they're widening the access here, making some changes to the parking area, and they were required to install a fire turnaround for life safety reasons. Those are the extent of the changes. Some special conditions associated with this development are that they have to obtain a driveway permit for the access improvements, and then we have a proposed condition for limiting the size of the signage on the site. Staff recommends approval of this request and I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Yes, Mr. Corley. I was just wondering about the buffering. Is this the same buffering that existed previous to this request? It will remain?
Yes, so existing buffering is going to remain. Anywhere where the existing landscaping is not deemed compliant with the buffer standards, they'll be, the petitioner will be required to install supplemental landscaping.
Okay.
Any further questions for Mr. Corley or staff? Thank you, Mr. Corley. I now open the public hearing. Mr. King, do we have anyone here to speak on this case?
Mr. Chairman, the applicant is here in support. We do not have anybody signed up in opposition.
Okay. Then I will close the public hearing. What is the pleasure? Yes?
Mr. Chairman, this is Clarence. I move that the planning board find that the request is consistent with the comprehensive plan.
Thank you. That's motion by Mr. Lamb?
Second.
Second by Ms. McCray. Any discussion? Mr. King, please call the roll.
George Bryan?
Yes.
Melinda Donegan?
Yes.
Jason Grubbs?
Yes.
Clarence Lamb?
Yes.
Chris Leek?
Yes.
Bo McCray?
Yeah.
Brenda Smith?
Yes.
Okay.
And, Mr. Chairman, this is Clarence. I move that the planning board recommend approval of W 3456.
Motion by Mr. Lamb is there second?
Second.
Second.
Second by Mr. Bryan. Any further discussion? Mr. King, please call the roll.
George Bryan?
Yes.
Melinda Donegan?
Yes.
Jason Grubbs?
Yes.
Clarence Lamb?
Yes.
Chris Leek?
Yes.
Bo McCray?
Yeah.
Brenda Smith?
Yes.
Alright. And, Mr. Chairman, before we move on to the next item, I just want to add two notes. Councilmember Parman is joining us this afternoon. She spoke with me earlier today. She wanted to note her support for this request and this ability for this small business to thrive and expand. She wanted to just mention that and I appreciate her joining us this afternoon. And the other thing I wanted to say was a thank you to Mr. Brown who was applicant on this case. He has worked with us through this process and sometimes when folks get in the zoning process, it's a little bit of a murky territory. He's been very patient with us and so I just want to say thanks for him working with us on that.
So note to Councilmember Parman, thank you for coming and Mr. Brown, thank you for your support and working diligently with staff to make this happen. And good luck going forward. Alright, Mr. Corley.
Okay, next item on the consent agenda is W 3457. It's a request to rezone a little more than half an acre from PB to GBL on the west side of South Stafford Road, south of Knollwood Street. Subject property is highlighted there in yellow. The proposed uses, excuse me, the proposed uses in this district are those allowed in the former district. So it's all the uses shared between the PB and the GB districts and some additional uses that would normally be allowed in both districts were removed because of compatibility issues with surrounding residential property. The request brings the property in line with its surrounding commercial neighbors, so staff recommends approval of this request and be happy to answer any questions.
Yes, Mr. Corley. So, since I assume once this, if it gets rezoned to GB, it won't meet the parking requirements of GB given the size of the building? I'm just wondering, should they redevelop? Would they need to come into compliance with that regarding the GB parking standards?
No, the parking standards are based on the size of the building, not the zoning district and both of these districts actually allow for a 30% reduction in parking. So there wouldn't be an issue either way, whether it's a PB or change to GB.
Okay, very good. Thank you.
That's the question, Mr. Corley.
Yes.
It seems in the explanation of the petitioner that this case is being brought in order to allow them to have the larger sign there. This is a large sign. It used to be a flashing sign with a number of things. I think that is changed with the sign ordinance or whatever. Do you see this as a trend? That properties may be headed this way or is this a one-time situation?
I would count this as a one-time thing. I've not seen or heard any other people coming forward trying to rezone their properties to have larger signs. I think in this case, it makes a lot of sense because the surrounding commercial properties are similarly zoned to allow those larger signs. This would be an outlier. I think that they, I'm not sure if their sign currently complies with the sign ordinance, but it will by 2022 or whenever the City Council decides to, if they decide to make any changes to that. But this is an outlier, I think, and we won't... I don't anticipate that we'll be seeing more people coming forward with rezonings primarily to get a larger sign.
Thank you.
Great question, Mr. Bryan. Any other questions for staff? Alright, thank you, Mr. Corley. I will now open the public hearing. Mr. King, do we have anyone here to speak on this particular case?
Mr. Chairman, the applicant is here. There's nobody here in opposition.
Alright, so still noting the applicant for being here. Thank you for coming. What is the pleasure of the board?
Mr. Chairman, this is Clarence. I move that the planning board find that the request is consistent with the comprehensive plan.
Move by Mr. Lamb?
Second.
Second by Mr. Grubbs. Any discussion? Mr. King, please call the roll.
George Bryan?
Yes.
Melinda Donegan?
Yes.
Jason Grubbs?
Yes.
Clarence Lamb?
Yes.
Chris Leek?
Yes.
Bo McCray?
Yeah.
Brenda Smith?
Yes.
Alright.
Mr. Chairman, this is Clarence. I move that the planning board recommend approval of W 3457.
A motion on the floor by Mr. Lamb?
Second.
Second by Mr. Grubbs. Any discussion? Mr. King, please call the roll.
George Bryan?
Yes.
Melinda Donegan?
Yes.
Jason Grubbs?
Yes.
Clarence Lamb?
Yes.
Chris Leek?
Yes.
Bo McCray?
Yeah.
Brenda Smith?
Yes.
Alright, thank you.
Alright, Mr. Chairman, the next section of the agenda is Section C. Anything in Section C, it's, the following three items are in Section C and anything in this section, the planning board is the final approval authority, so we only need one motion to approve or deny based on the board's pleasure. I'll start with C1, which is a subdivision called Terrace at Border Creek. Those 30 lots, single-family subdivision, 11.25 acres at the western terminus of Tiger Eye Court, west of Quicksilver Drive. Here's the proposed subdivision. It's an extension of Tiger Eye Court, which you can see if you follow my cursor here. The entire thing is Tiger Eye Court, which is accessed from streets in Davidson County. It meets all requirements in the UDO. Staff recommends approval.
Mr. Chairman, Clarence, I move approval.
Motion by Mr. Lamb is there second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Grubbs. Any discussion? Mr. King, would you please call the roll?
George Bryan?
Yes.
Melinda Donegan?
Yes.
Jason Grubbs?
Yes.
Clarence Lamb?
Yes.
Chris Leek?
Yes.
Bo McCray?
Yeah.
Brenda Smith?
Yes.
Thank you.
Alright, the next item in Section C is a proposed subdivision called Hopewell Garden. This is a 91 lot, single-family subdivision on almost 32 acres on the west side of Hopewell Church Road, north of Fishville Road. Here is the proposed subdivision. It includes two access points from Hopewell Church Road, a stub to the north, landscape easement along the lots with frontage on Hopewell Church Road, some water management device in connection to an existing development to the west. That existing development is called Parkside East. And you should have received some information. I've kind of summarized it here from the neighbors. Most of them are from the Parkside East community. Just wanted to highlight those here. Two big ones, landscaping. No buffers are required for a traditional subdivision. The proposed lot sizes are meeting the minimum standards for the underlying zoning district, but the developer does propose a 10-foot landscape easement along the frontage of Hopewell Church Road. And then the larger concern, I think, was connectivity. The UDO requires subdivisions to have interconnected streets to adjoining properties outside the subdivision for a consistent development pattern. The developer proposed a stub to the north for future development and they proposed a connection to an existing street to the west. Exemptions are few, primarily related to topographical or natural constraints. Additional traffic alone is not a criteria for exempting connections, so I just wanted to highlight those concerns and make those statements to the board. Staff recommends approval of this request because it meets the requirements of the UDO.
Mr. Chairman, this is Clarence. I move approval.
Move by Mr. Lamb?
Second.
Second by Mr. Grubbs. Any further discussion?
Yes, Mr. Corley, is Stillson Street a stub? Is that what it is?
Yes, that is the stub proposed to the north.
And then all the rest connect, so it looks like the main flow of traffic is going out to Hopewell?
Sure.
And then there's one that goes through an adjoining neighborhood, connects that neighborhood up and gives them access to Hopewell as well there. Is that correct?
Yes, it's East Side Drive down here at the bottom of the plan.
Okay. Thank you.
Any further discussion? Mr. King, would you please call the roll?
George Bryan?
Yes.
Melinda Donegan?
Yes.
Jason Grubbs?
Yes.
I believe Mr. Hicks joined us. Mr. Hicks, if you're there?
Yes.
Okay. Clarence Lamb?
Yes.
Chris Leek?
Yes.
Bo McCray?
Yeah.
Brenda Smith?
Yes.
Thank you.
Sorry, I forgot to mute myself. Next item in Section C is a subdivision called Robindale, 17 lots on 6.3 acres at the northern terminus of Robindale Drive, north of Robbins Drive. There's not a lot to talk about here. This is 17 lots. They've got a stub to the west and extension where the stub is called Robindale Court. It meets all the UDO requirements. Staff recommends approval.
Mr. Chairman, this is Clarence. I move approval.
Thank you, Mr. Lamb. Motion by Mr. Lamb?
Second.
Second by Mr. Grubbs. Any further discussion? Mr. King?
If I could ask, Mr. Corley, the, it was hard to see this when I went out to take a look at it because it's up in the woods, I guess, and I could, and Robindale Drive, dead ends, but the Robindale Court, now is that just going into an empty lot right now?
It is, yes.
And it is, and, okay, and that's zone something else, huh?
It's zone RS9.
The empty lot?
The adjacent property is zone RS9.
Okay, I saw an MH there and I didn't know what the...
Desmond, can you go back to the location map?
So I think there is an MH zoned property to the west of this property, but I believe the stub goes into property zone RS9.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay, it was impossible to sort of get a sense of where those were. Thank you very much.
Mr. King, call the roll, please.
Okay, George Bryan?
Yes.
Melinda Donegan?
Yes.
Jason Grubbs?
Yes.
Tommy Hicks?
Yes.
Clarence Lamb?
Yes.
Chris Leek?
Yes.
Bo McCray?
Yeah.
Brenda Smith?
Yes.
Alright, thank you.
Thank you, members of the board. The next section of the agenda is Section D. I believe Section D is also three items. These are also items where the planning board is the final approval authority, so these items also only require one motion and vote for approval or denial. D1 is a planning board review, a two-plot cemetery, Yates Family Cemetery on .05 acre on the south side of what used to be, I think, old NC Highway 65, south of Blue's Creek Road. This is really just a couple of plots for members of the family to be buried and a driveway to get there. This meets the UDO standards, so staff recommends approval.
Mr. Chairman, this is Clarence. I move approval.
So note to Mr. Lamb, thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Donegan. Any further discussion? Mr. King, would you please call the roll?
George Bryan?
Yes.
Melinda Donegan?
Yes.
Jason Grubbs?
Yes.
Tommy Hicks?
Yes.
Clarence Lamb?
Yes.
Chris Leek?
Yes.
Bo McCray?
Yeah.
Brenda Smith?
Yes.
Thank you.
Alright, the next item is actually being continued, so you don't need to make a motion on this one. They sent their continuous request before the deadline. It will be continued to January 14, 21. So it'll be a while before you see it again. The last item on the consent agenda is D3, which is a multifamily development called Weatherwood Muse for 16 units and 1.14 acres at the northeast corner of Weatherwood Lane and Weatherwood Court. Here is the proposed site plan. It includes sidewalks along both street frontages, so Weatherwood Lane and Weatherwood Court, along with two eight-unit apartment buildings. You see the elevations up here in the upper right corner. This development or this site plan meets the UDO standards, so staff recommends approval.
Mr. Chairman, this is Clarence. I move approval.
Motion by Mr. Lamb. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Grubbs. Any further discussion? Mr. King, would you please call the roll?
George Bryan?
Yes.
Melinda Donegan?
Yes.
Jason Grubbs?
Yes.
Tommy Hicks?
Yes.
Clarence Lamb?
Yes.
Chris Leek?
Yes.
Bo McCray?
Yeah.
Brenda Smith?
Yes.
Alright, thank you.
That's all the items on the consent agenda. I guess we will hear from Gary Roberts. Um I guess we will hear from Gary Roberts. Site plan amendment for Wells Fargo.
Uh this zoning docket number is W thirty-four fifty-five, this is continued from your October meeting. Uh the petitioner is Wachovia Bank and.
Gary, can you speak up a little bit or pull that mic a little closer to your face, it's kind of a little bit faint.
Uh is this any better?
I think so.
Um how about this, if I speak a little bit louder, is that better?
Yeah, if you speak louder, you're still a little faint for some reason.
Okay, um so this next case is W thirty-four fifty-five, is that better?
Yes, we can hear you.
Okay, this is continued from your October meeting and the petitioner is Wachovia Bank N A. The site is eight point six five acres and it's located at the northwest corner of the intersection of Sunny Noel Court and Silas Creek Parkway. It's a site plan amendment for the use of Services A in a G O S zoning district. Uh this is the legacy growth management plan, it's located within the yellow suburban, suburban neighborhoods, growth management area three. And this is a zoning map showing the subject property there, highlighted in yellow. Um some of you may remember, this was approved originally in nineteen ninety-eight. Uh for the Wachovia Wells Fargo Data Center, it's about a ninety thousand square foot, two-story building. Um this also came before you in May for a site plan amendment for some changes to their security fencing along Silas Creek Parkway. Um the property is zone G O S, general office special use. There's a mixture of zoning surrounding the property, mostly office and business zoning to the north and east and south. Um and then you have the Greencrest Neighborhood and Ferncliff area, zone, single-family residential located directly. Uh to the west, and you can see the single-family homes there that back up to the site. Aerial image showing the development pattern of the subject property. And a couple of images on, on site, this is Sunny Noel Court. Uh the existing entrance there, you see where that white car is, that's where the uh. Service and employee entrance is right now, gated entrance, that will stay in place. And just off this image to the left is where the new service entrance will be installed, so this landscaping will remain in place. The parking lot that you see beyond these trees will be reconfigured. Uh for some angled parking and a new guard access located there to the left. Uh that again is the existing entrance that will remain for employees. And these are a couple of the homes back on Ferncliff, uh these two fairly new homes there are probably the closest to the data center. Uh which is located in the background. And one image out on Silas Creek Parkway, the site is to the left. So this is a North Suburban Area Plan update adopted in twenty fourteen, the request is consistent with that, which recommends office use there, shown in pink for the site. The only approved use for this is for a data center. And this is the proposed site plan, so to get you oriented a little bit to the right, in this area here, that's the existing data center. Uh they're proposing about sixty-six hundred square feet of additional building expansion. Shown in this area here and this area here. Uh the predominant work uh changes will be again reconfiguring the parking lot over here. And this will be a new access point um in the southern area here on Sunny Noel Court. So service vehicles would come in, uh go through the gated entrance there for service and, and maintenance and delivery. And then exit again through the gated entrance there. Um couple of other features, this seventy-five foot undisturbed area, which was originally approved on the ninety-eight approval, that will remain intact. Uh there is going to be some grading and tree removal in this area here, kind of in the back area of those two homes I showed you earlier on Ferncliff. Uh they will have to replant that with a twenty-foot type three buffer yard.
Excuse me, uh Mr. Roberts, are, are you using a pointer when you're talking to us and saying that?
Yes, and uh I apologize, so maybe that is.
I may not, I may be the only one not seeing it, but I keep hearing you referring to these and I'm not seeing where that is.
Well, uh so, yes, I would, I would imagine that you're not able to see that, um I apologize for that. In the upper left-hand area, um you can see uh the corner there and one of the. Yes, right in that area right there, this is about twenty-eight feet of common area that's connected to one of the speakers, I think Mr. Heflin's property there. I'll let the petitioner address that specifically, but it looks like that vegetation will remain in place. A little bit to the right, which is behind the homes that I showed you earlier. Uh some of that vegetation will be removed and grading in that buffer yard. They will have to replant that again with a twenty-foot type three buffer yard. So those are the changes that are, that are kind of close to those single-family homes there. So in summary, the request is consistent with the area plan for the office land use recommendation. Uh staff perceives no transportation-related issues associated with, with this request, it will be a, a minimal traffic increase. This is a pretty low traffic generating use, and again, they're only adding about sixty-six hundred square feet. Uh and the approved undisturbed area along the northwestern side of the site would remain in place, that's the seventy-five foot area uh that I mentioned earlier. So staff recommends approval of this request. And uh the site plan does meet U D O requirements, and I'll be glad to answer any questions.
Yes, Mr. Roberts?
Yes.
Um so is, is there any changes to the existing um fence back there? Or will there be a different type of fence installed?
Uh from looking at the site plan, just to the north of the guardhouse, it looks like that they are going to. Uh put a new eight-foot uh vinyl coated fence back there. Um that's, that's what I'm picking up from the site plan. Along that buffer yard that I mentioned earlier, I don't, I don't see any fencing on the site plan and none is required. Uh but I'll defer to the petitioner. In regard to that, I don't think there's any new fencing shown along Sunny Noel Court that I can see.
Mr. Roberts, this is Bart Sargent, I'm the architect, I can speak to that.
Okay, Mr. Sergeant, if you would give your name and address, please.
Let, let's, let's, let's do this, th- this is Aaron King, let, let's do this, um. But Mr. Chair, if there's any other, if there's no other questions from the board, we can move into. Public hearing and we can certainly recognize Mr. Sergeant as the first speaker.
Okay, I was fine, are there any other questions for staff? All right, I'm going to now open the public hearing, it looks like we do have individuals here to speak on this matter. Again, each side will have twelve minutes and there will be no rebuttal period. So, Mr. King, I'm gonna turn it over to you to call the proponents and the opponent.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, um we'll just go right down the list, the first person signed up as a proponent is Bart Sargent. So Bart, if you could unmute yourself, provide your name and address for the record and begin your remarks.
Yes, sir, my name is Bart Sargent, I'm at twenty-seven sixty Hestertown Road, that's Monroe, Georgia, I'm the architect for this project.
If, if you have any remarks or you'd like to tell us anything about the case, certainly feel free to.
Yes, sir. So the uh, the nature of this project is to upgrade some of the security protocols at this site. As you guys are aware, this is a high-security location. Um part of what we're seeing at this site, uh it was built in the late nineties and a lot of the security uh measures uh in place at that time. Um obviously have changed greatly uh over the last twenty-plus years, so. This is a, an effort to uh, to enhance the security. As well as alleviate some of the traffic backup um that we're having at the entry point to this site. Um there's a very short queue, uh as you enter the site through the gate that you guys saw in the photos, uh off Sunny Noel Court. Um and what happens there is when um deliveries uh arrive, uh even though they may be scheduled. Um those delivery vehicles have to go through various inspections that hold up. Uh other employees who have the credentials to easily access the site. Um and uh in, in turn, throw traffic out into Sunny Noel Court. So um there's not a lot of traffic on and off this site, but at peak times, uh that's the issue that we're having. So the effort uh with the second service entrance would alleviate the conflict between those. Uh varying traffic um instances there. Um we are proposing uh replacing the existing security fences around this site. Um the fencing that is there today um has in effect aged out, they are having some. Uh difficulty with maintaining um the area around those fences. Um the proposed new outer fence, um this is a double, double barrier here, um there are two fences that. Uh are around the perimeter of this site that are about ten feet apart. The proposed outer fence will be a different type from what is there. Um we did submit cut sheets um in an earlier um submittal for that fencing. It is a um, a vinyl coated mesh fence. Um the, the request from security is for that to be a ten-foot outer fence. And a chain link type fence for the interior barrier. And um further on the property to the west. Um that property line where the single-family residences are located. Um there are buffers there, there is a seventy-five foot buffer undisturbed that will be maintained. There's also, I believe it's a twenty-foot type three landscape buffer. Uh along those residences that will also be maintained, there will be minimal grading uh in the buffer. Uh near the security uh guardhouse. And all of that vegetation in that area will be replaced as part of. Mr. Chairman, there's eight minutes left for the proponents.
Is there, is there anyone else in here to speak in support?
Mr. Mr. Chairman, the next person signed up in support is Joseph Rogers, so Mr. Rogers, if you would like to speak. Um please unmute yourself, give your name and address for the record and begin your remarks.
Yes, my name is Joseph Rogers, I am uh a project manager with Wells Fargo. My address is ninety-four sixteen Fairmead Drive, Charlotte, North Carolina, uh two eight two six nine. So to, to take you back off what Art stated, the overall goal for our project was in consideration of. The neighboring businesses in that area, we realized we have a significant amount of uh traffic day in and day out to keep our data center operational. And we realized that that traffic does create congestion on Sunny Noel Court as well as on Silas Creek Parkway. So we were very intentional in our design, understanding the space restrictions that we have with that particular site. Uh that we couldn't expand any more than we have, um and also realizing that if we could come up with a design that allowed free flow of traffic. While diverting free flow of pedestrian and employee traffic. While allowing a secondary entrance for deliveries, we would minimize the um. The, the congestion or the bottleneck situation we face uh right on Sunny Noel Court. Now, we understand that on the backside of the property, the neighboring property, we've had a lot of discussions about how do we continue to keep that buffer in place? How do we continue to allow some level of privacy to exist the neighbors there without intruding onto their property? Or making their life inconce, in, you know, be inconveniencing them during construction phase or into perpetuity. So we, we're open, our first thought was to look at how we handle the overall fencing on that backside. So we do have a two-layered fencing, uh anti-climb and mesh flintin' to kind of provide a screening. And obviously, if there is a more desire to some level of additional vegetation on the backside, to make the. Neighbors a little more comfortable, we're, we're open to that. Uh and you know, we, we want to be friendly, we want to be as, as accommodating as we can. But also, we do have to operate within our corporate security requirements and corporate standards. As we build this facility and as we layer in our, our new security fencing and setback requirements, et cetera. Uh so, you know, if, if there are specific concerns from the neighbors, I know there was something that you brought up earlier. But if there are specific concerns from the neighbors in terms of screening, vegetation, et cetera. Uh note that we're more than willing to listen and add and try to be as accommodating as possible uh to help this forward. That's it.
Six minutes, six minutes.
All right. Mr. Chairman, we have one more person signed up in support, it is Brent Thomas, so Brent, if you would like to give any remarks, please unmute yourself. Give your name and address for the record and begin your remarks.
I'm Brent Thomas, uh civil engineer for the site, my zip code is three zero zero nine three. I will uh reserve any time we have left to answer any questions that the neighbor has.
Mr. Thomas, can you give us your address for the record, please?
Sport three seven one seven, uh Park Drive, Norcross, Georgia.
All right, thank you. Mr. Chairman, um those are all the speakers signed up in support, if you're ready, we can turn it over to the opposition.
Yes, sir, nice move forward.
Okay, um the first person signed up in opposition is Rob Heflin. Um Rob, if you're there, please uh unmute yourself, give your name and address for the record and begin your remarks.
My name is Robin Heflin, I live at fifteen sixty Ferncliff Drive, here in Winston, two seven one oh six.
All right.
The uh first area that I would like to bring up is um. The. I've lived here since two thousand and seven, and, and Wachovia Wells Fargo has been a wonderful neighbor, they've done some things in this. In the development of the two houses that are to my right that you saw. Um they've done some good things to make sure that those people had uh the privacy and, and. Uh in stable value in their home. What we are wondering is if, num, number one, the, one of the assumptions is that we have backup. On Silas Creek from this existing entrance. Um I'm a retired guy, so I have time to go out and look at things, and I'm also a former intelligence officer. So I'm aware of the security issues that you all have. So the point there is that I have not seen any traffic back up. Um I have seen delivery trucks or waste management trucks back up on a wood because one, they arrive way too early. Um they have brought them back into compliance with the noise ordinance, they don't do five forty-five or four forty-five pickups anymore. On the waste management, so let's get back to the, to the real question is, I, I, all this makes sense. And doesn't look harmful, except for one thing, that one consideration I'd, I'd like to know if you thought about. And that is that these delivery trucks will be coming, it didn't, perhaps at this time of year. Uh where darkness is early and the lights from their trucks will be shining through, potentially shining through. The uh wired mesh fence or um into our properties. Cause the leaves will be gone, all that vegetation is gone, so the seventy-five foot barrier is not at its full. Peak, uh like during the other nine months of the year. Is there consider, was there consideration given to somehow building a barrier that blocks the, the lights from the trucks? And they're on all the time anyway, they're required to be on time, on when they're traveling. Is my question clear or fuzzy?
Mr. Heflin, I'll, I'll take, I, I want to make sure I don't cut into your time during the public hearing, did you have any more comments? We can certainly address the questions at the conclusion.
Um, no, I, the other, one of the other concerns is, is, isn't there, um one more question? Isn't there uh high-volume fiber optic cable running along that? Entrance, that new entrance for the trucks? And is that yours or does it belong to the public or to A T and T or whoever put it down? And is that yours or does it belong to the public or to AT&amp;T or whoever put it down? And what will happen to that if it's for public use?
Mr. Heflin, does that conclude your remarks? Because what we'll do is we can, once the public hearing is over, we can come back to these.
Okay, fine. Yeah, that concludes.
They're nine minutes.
Okay, anyone else here to speak in opposition, Mr. King?
No, Mr. Chairman.
All right, then if that's the case, I'm going to declare the public hearing closed. And are you going to address Mr. Heflin's questions or?
I'm going to start out, I'm probably going to tag Desmond in.
All right.
So with respect to the, I think the first question was with respect about lighting going through the buffer and into the neighbor's yards. I think at a time of year like now with leaves are coming off the trees is kind of what I heard there. One, there is not a UDO and ordinance standard for that. Generally, the buffer yards do a good job of that and the fence is a good complement to that. It would be really a question for the applicant if they would be willing to do something, either change their fence to something that was opaque in this area or add some potential evergreen plantings to help shield those potential lights. If they'd be willing to do that, that'd be a question for them. The second question about the fiber optic cable, I don't know the answer to that. And if somebody else on our team does, that's generally not a utility that the city gets involved in. We're generally looking at water and sewer. So I don't know the answer to the question on the fiber optic cable. And perhaps one of the folks, the engineers from the Wells Fargo team may know the answer to that. So, Mr. Chair, if the board is interested, you may want to hear some response from the applicant's team. Is there's any willingness to do anything with respect to fencing or landscaping? And if they have any information regarding the fiber optic cable?
Sure, I would love to have someone come so that we can properly address Mr. Heflin's question. So if the applicant would have someone speak on this matter, it would be greatly appreciated.
I would be happy to speak on these two questions. This is Bart Sargent.
All right.
Regarding the first question related to the truck lights shining through the property, you'll notice on the site plan that we will actually be removing a section of the existing fence back to the location of the proposed guardhouse. So a good portion of that property line would not have fencing. However, in discussions with security, we would be okay with installing more dense vegetation as long as it could be a fair distance, 10 feet or so away from the fencing so that they can maintain visibility. So no problem with evergreen vegetation along that property. Regarding the fiber optic lines, we recognize there is an easement for utilities along the west end of the existing parking area. Those utilities will remain in place. I don't know that I can speak to who they belong to at the moment, but there are no plans to relocate those utilities.
Mr. Heflin, did that properly address your question?
Yes, it does. That if they're willing to consider greenery to help block lighting, that would be wonderful.
Great, thank you so very much.
So, Mr. Chairman, what I would mention is, first of all, thanks to the Wells Fargo folks for being willing to add some additional landscaping there to address the concerns. What we would need to do is if the board is so inclined to recommend approval of this, we'll need to add a condition that goes with it that calls for, let's say, a single row of evergreen plantings. And what we can do is staff can work with applicant tomorrow to get that location nailed down and added to the site plan before it goes forward to council. So we can add that condition in any motion if the board is so inclined.
Okay. All right, well, I think we can move forward here. What is the pleasure of the board on this case?
Mr. Chairman, this is Clarence. I move that the planning board find that the request is consistent with the comprehensive plan.
Motion by Mr. Lamb. Second by Mr. Grubbs. Any further discussion? Mr. King, would you please call the roll?
George Bryan?
Yes.
Melinda Donegan?
Yes.
Jason Grubbs?
Yes.
Tommy Hicks?
Yes.
Clarence Lamb?
Yes.
Chris Leek?
Yes.
Mo McCray?
Yeah.
Brenda Smith?
Yes.
Okay.
And, Mr. Chairman, this is Clarence again. I move that the planning board recommend approval of W 3455 with the additional condition that a single row of evergreen trees be planted in an area satisfactory to the petitioner and Mr. Heflin.
Thank you for that motion. Motion by Mr. Lamb is there, second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Grubbs. Any further discussion? Mr. King, would you please call the roll?
George Bryan?
Yes.
Melinda Donegan?
Yes.
Jason Grubbs?
Yes.
Tommy Hicks?
Yes.
Clarence Lamb?
Yes.
Chris Leek?
Yes.
Mo McCray?
Yeah.
Brenda Smith?
Yes.
All right, thank you, everyone. That concludes that item, and now we will continue through the agenda. The next item we'll discuss is item B5, and that is UDO CC6. This is our UDO text amendment dealing with traffic impact standards. David Reed briefed this at your last work session. So he is going to give a very brief summary of it since we spoke at length about this before, and I'll turn it over to David.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, yeah, we did brief this actually at your September work session. And since that time, after discussion by the board, we revised some of the language to make this section more consistent with the UDO as a whole. So those changes have now been incorporated. So I'll just run through this brief slideshow and try and answer any questions at the end. But the petitioner is planning development services and the request is to amend the traffic impact study standards. In 2001, standards were adopted delineating when traffic impact studies would be required for certain types of non-residential development. It was case UDO 73. Since 2001, many significant development projects have included TIS as part of the rezoning process. Because UDO 73 did not apply to residential development, some residential projects that were impactful enough to justify a TIS did not require submission of such a study at the time of development application. Next slide. Furthermore, UDO 73 did not include specific language requiring a TIS for any review process other than a special use rezoning. Ours is the only large North Carolina community where residential development is excluded from the TIS requirements. Winston-Salem DOT and NC DOT staff often identify the need for a TIS during sketch plan reviews based on the trip generation of a proposed development regardless of development type. Staff recommends amending the UDO to base the need for a TIS on the amount of traffic the development will add to the road network regardless of the land use that is generating the traffic and requiring a TIS for development which meet the trip generation thresholds regardless of whether the proposed development is being submitted for a rezoning or a planning board review. So we would recommend approval, and I'll try and answer any questions you have.
I have one question, David. So with the TIS, would you require that the TIS also specify the, any variance from the comp plan? So there are several different analysis that go into a TIS, right? So it's not only trips, additional households, but then any deviation from the comp plan? I didn't know if that was part of our TIS process.
Are you asking if they're deviating from the comp plan, that would trigger a TIS?
No, so when you're conducting, when you hire a consultant to do these TIS studies, there are several conditions and analysis that they have to put in place. My question is, would we want them to, would the condition of this also be to have it base a new study per the comp plan? Let's say that an additional unit is added that deviates from the comp plan or if the TIS can say, well, this is compliant with what we have in the comp plan already. That's clear.
Well, right now, I think really we're just basing it on what other cities do, and that's really on the number of trips the development generates. And we really had not looked into that, and Kirk might have something to add to this.
Thanks, Dave.
Wouldn't be a trigger. I'm asking if we can add a kind of test requirement in that TIS. So if it does trigger it, then saying another layer to the analysis is how this compares to the comprehensive plan.
So, Mo, let me jump in for just a minute and give some more background on this. As David mentioned, our TIS requirements don't include that currently. Basically, it's just a simple analysis of what are the existing road conditions in the area? And will the proposed development basically put you into Level of Service E or F or some other scenario where there would be impacts on the surrounding area? These TIS impacts or TIS standards weren't actually developed by planning staff. They were developed by our transportation staff in city DOT. And those are the folks who are actually the review authority for these TIS reports. So what you mentioned, that's certainly something that if the board directed us, that could be explored and putting a requirement like that into ordinance. But that's certainly something we wouldn't want to unilaterally do without having conversations with the folks who wrote the ordinance and who administer it.
I don't think it's a need at this time to do that. I think you all did a great job. It was just more of a clarification if it would require to then also look at the comp plan in that part of that traffic study.
Not currently, thanks.
I had some questions, well, one question in particular, Mr. Reed. With regard to the triggering threshold for the TIS 150 peak hour trips, just wondering why there wasn't a gross number of trips that would trigger it as well? Like some of our neighboring cities have a certain number, like 3,000 or 1,000 total trips per day to trigger it. Did you think that was unnecessary? Just wondering why you didn't put a gross number in there as well as the peak hour trips?
Yeah, we saw that some of the cities did it somewhat differently, but the general, generally, the cities use the 150. And when we showed this update to the transportation planners, that's the figure they were most interested in using. So they didn't suggest any other way of determining what the trigger should be.
So do you happen to have some kind of ballpark idea of how many gross trips would trigger 150 peak hour trips?
Not trips so much. We did look into to see if we're adding residential, how many residential units in a development would trigger it? And that would be like about 150 homes. So if you see a subdivision with less than 150 homes, it would likely not trigger a TIS unless it's in a very congested area. And then multifamily, we found a number of about 340 mid-rise multifamily units would trigger it.
Okay, thank you.
That's the question, Mr. Reed. Peak seems to have changed in times of COVID and may change with different patterns of working. Will the definition of peak change or is that pretty set in stone?
I imagine it will stay the same. It's up to transportation planners, but you know, at this point in time, I think that many households is, that's the number they use as a benchmark.
And Brian, just so you can know, those generally, they use historic data as of right now.
David, could I just?
Let's go with Mo and then hang back, Kirk.
Yeah, I don't, so most of these traffic studies, when you condition them, especially in this period of COVID, have been using historic data as a backup as well as they have an ability to analyze future trips and generations. And so there's just a stress test that they put into their analysis. And so I don't foresee peak kind of changing as I've seen in the industry.
I'm concerned about what that means for the future, but I guess we can live with that. Because peak affects more than just this UDO, I think there are other times when we use it. So we may need to change peak at some point or else put in a total trip in there. If that, if peak time is not getting at the kinds of questions that we're trying to ask about this. Thank you.
Planning board members, I do want to go back to Melinda's question about how does this translate into overall trips generated by the development? Just to take the single-family example that we were talking about, I did some quick math calculations. Basically, each single-family residence, according to the ITE manual, generates about 9.5 trips per day, roughly between 9 to 10 trips. So basically, that would be a subdivision of 150 homes, which is kind of the threshold for triggering a TIS. That would kind of have between 1400 and 1500 trips a day. So that gives you the scale of one use of kind of the size of project that would trigger this. Again, each ITE use has its own threshold, but by and large, that peak hour does receive, you know, probably 10% of the trips of a given 24-hour period, it seems like.
That's helpful, thank you.
Thank you, Kirk. Are there any additional questions? All right.
Mr. Chairman, this is Clarence. I move that the planning board recommend approval of.
This is a public hearing.
Yeah.
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
Okay. Is there anyone here to speak on this matter?
No, there is not.
I don't think so.
Okay, all right, then I declare the public hearing closed. What is the motion of the board?
Mr. Chairman, this is Clarence. I move the planning board recommend approval of UDO CC 96.
Motion by Mr. Lamb? Second by Mr. Grubbs. Any further discussion? Mr. King, would you please call the roll?
George Bryan?
Yes.
Melinda Donegan?
Yes.
Jason Grubbs?
Yes.
Tommy Hicks?
Yes.
Clarence Lamb?
Yes.
Chris Leek?
Yes.
Mo McCray?
Yeah.
Brenda Smith?
Yes.
All right, thank you. Before we move away from this item, I just want to ask a question. You may have seen in the packet that we gave you one text amendment that's got all the strike throughs, highlights, underlines, and there's a lot going on on something like this. And then we gave you sort of the cleaned up version. Just checking in, was that helpful? Was it not helpful? This is our first time kind of working through that, and I'd appreciate any feedback from the board on that.
I thought that was helpful.
Yeah.
Very helpful.
Absolutely.
Okay, good, that's good feedback. So we may not do it for sort of the simple ones, but if it's getting a little bit complicated, we may continue doing that if it's helpful.
I think you missed one of your may, shall, could typos in it. It was on page two, see what section one, there was a word may that didn't get striked out. I'll just email it to you if you want.
Okay, thank you, thank you. Okay, Mr. Chairman, that brings us B6. I can't remember if Desmond hit this on the consent agenda or not, but that is automatically continued to your December meeting. That is our family group home text amendment. We're just working on cleaning up some of those definitions with the attorney's office. We'll have that ready for you in December. The last item on your agenda today is a public hearing on our Doral Drive, Renolda Road interchange plan. And Marco Adrati is going to be presenting that. This is another item that we briefed in detail at your work session. So Marco is going to give a good summary of this item. And I know we have some folks, I think, here to either listen or speak on this. So I will turn it over to Marco.
Thank you, and good afternoon, planning board members. Yes, we spoke to you on the work session about this, so I'll be brief. Next. This is part of the Northern Bellway interchanges plans that we have been doing and continue to be doing. This is the second one we have completed, and we'll work on the third one, which is New Walkin Town Road next year. Next. So what are the interchange plans? They involve the community, trying to develop a long-term. Let me see, I can't see there. Long-term vision for the interchange, and these are design plans. And so we're really stressing that we are providing design guidance for the interchange area. We're not dealing with land use. And we may recommend, recommend some future infrastructure improvements such as sidewalks or things like that. In terms of the process, we started last year collecting data and looking at the existing conditions. And then in January of this year, we had the kickoff meeting. It was very well attended. We had about a hundred and fifty people, which was some of them were there because of the bellway, but it was really well attended, and we got some great input. Citizens told us what they would like to see in terms of design on these interchanges. And so we use that to to do our design visions. And back in September, we had a couple Zoom meetings where we presented the draft plan, and we're moving now into the adoption process. Next. So we're looking at two different interchanges, Doral Drive and Renolda Road. Next. And as I said, we're not dealing with land use. These, the proposed land use that are on the adopted plans, area plans, we're not changing that. So you can see that it's mostly a single-family or multifamily, just a little section of industrial. But it is a single-family, a multifamily, and that's what we are showing. Next. So let's look at the Doral Drive first. Next. Really, we're concentrating on section A as we showed you, but we included section B, which is Long Creek Village Phase Two because of some concerns about connectivity. So we look at that, and we added some additional text on the draft plan to that talks about the interconnection and some of the things that could be done in the future to allow for those. Next. So we concentrate on section A, and what we did was to provide an illustration of a potential development if all this land is put together. And so there are two sections, the northern one, it's a regular subdivision, environmentally sensitively designed with steep slopes preserved and wooded areas, and then an area in the middle as an open space, which is the Mountains to Sea Trail connecting to the Long Creek Park. We also added some language related to noise walls because this development will have bought the Bellway. And so additional landscaping is shown on on this overall design concept. Next. The second interchange is Renolda Road. Next. And here we look at the three potential focus areas, multifamily, single-family, and an industrial area. Next. For the multifamily, that's the the area located between Renolda Road and Transu Road. We did an analysis, and we follow some of the guidelines provided by the citizens. Next. Which we're calling for high limitations, having having townhouses next to single-family residential neighborhoods and two-story buildings along Transu over Renolda Road. And if we have three-story buildings, they will be inside away from public view. And so an illustration like this shows lower density, nine point eight dwelling units per acre. It can be up to eighteen. Next. This one shows the overall design concept, showing the buildings, the vehicular connections, the pedestrian connection, preservation of open space, playgrounds, you know, all of that that could be, that take place at this location. Next. And here we have the aerial photograph showing the Bellway and the interchange. And we added to the north a single-family subdivision, an extension of an existing one, just using the Stott Street as an example of how that can be completed. Next. And the last section we looked at, citizens wanted and had some really good ideas about redeveloping this property, which is for sale. Unfortunately, next, it is located in the future growth area, and there is no sewer. So we, we're suggesting in the, in the area plan that this has to wait until utilities are extended and, and a more comprehensive development can be included at this location. Next. With that, after this public hearing, and we will go to the city council, have a public hearing before them, as well as the board of county commissioners. I'll be happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Are there any questions? Thank you first, Marco. Are there any questions for Marco or staff? All right. Thank you so very much. Mr. King, did we have anyone here to speak on this case?
Mr. Chairman, we have several people here, and and I'll just, I'm not sure if they want to speak or if they're just observing. I'll just quickly go down the list. When I say your name, if you're here and wanting to speak, please let us know. The first person is, oh, somebody is just Lois, L. O. I. S. If you're there and you can hear me, if you want to speak on this item, please let us know.
No, I do not choose to speak at this time, but I am a resident in this area and just very concerned about what's, what the planning process is going to be.
Very good. Thank you. The, the next person on the list is Charles Taft. Mr. Taft, if you wish to, do you wish to speak on this item, or are you just watching? And it looks like you're still muted if you're trying to talk.
There we go. I'm just interested in the area. I'm, I'm, I'm just watching.
Okay, thank you. The next person is Mayor Rocket from Bethany. Mayor, if you're there and you would like to speak, please let us know.
No, no need to speak. Just wanted to find out about it.
Okay.
Mayor Rocket, it's good to see you, sir.
Same here, Chris.
The, the next person on our list is Mike Walker. Mike, if you would like to speak on this item, please let us know.
I'm just here as an interested observer of a resident in the area.
Okay. And the last person is Rebecca Color. We've got you signed up as an observer, and let's just make sure that is still the case.
I just have one question. For the development area on the Doral Drive, is that set in stone, stone once all of these hearings take place? Because I do own property right there.
Marco, you want to answer that one?
Yes. No, it is not. I didn't go into too much detail here, but there are eight structures. And, and there are, I think, about thirteen property owners. What we're suggesting is if this is put together by a developer, that something like what we've shown can be developed. A, but if some property owners do not want to sell their land, they want to continue to live there or rent their properties, that will remain that way. It means that this alternative or this illustration, it's only possible if everybody wants to sell and everybody wants to you know, so that that will be the only, the only way it can be done. You can still develop your land the way you want under the current zoning. There will be few, few houses if people want to do that. That's, that's, that's not going to change.
Well, unfortunately, you're taking the livable part of my property because the other side of my property is like all downhill and in that wooded structure and the steep hills. So, thank you.
You're welcome.
Mr. Chair, I think that answers our question on the public hearing. I think we've gone through the list, and I don't believe there's anybody else here that wants to speak on this item.
All right, I'm going to declare the public hearing closed, and what is the motion of the board?
Mr. Chairman, this is Clarence. I move approval.
Motion by Mr. Lamb?
Second.
Second by Mr. Grubbs. Any further discussion?
Yes, Mr. Chair, I, we, we discussed this at work session, but in, since we're more public here, I did want to say that I certainly regret not being more involved in the Renolda Highway sixty-seven discussion. I did not realize that that was part of this Doral piece when, when it came up a number of months ago. But I, I had expressed in our work planning session that this area here, which I grew up in and, and, and use fairly often now, has thrived very well with restaurants and some availability for smaller stores right at that intersection. The bypass is going to get rid of all of that property that was either non-conforming or was zoned to provide those services. So I certainly hope that that area that is currently the old car junkyard that is marked industrial in the future could keep at least an eye open to being available for restaurants and things like that that will make some availability for the development that I'm sure that will occur further out on sixty-seven when that highway happens. And I would love to hear more of the community's thoughts about that as we progress in the future. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Brian. So there's a previous motion is second on the floor. Mr. King, if there is no further discussion, would you please call the roll?
George Bryan?
Yes.
Melinda Donegan?
Yes.
Jason Grubbs?
Yes.
Tommy Hicks?
Yes.
Clarence Lamb?
Yes.
Chris Leek?
Yes.
Mo McCray?
Yeah.
Brenda Smith?
Yes.
All right, thank you. That brings us to, on, on your item, it's item E. That is your work program for the last six months of this year. Kirk went through that in pretty good detail at your work session. So it is now before you to take action. Certainly, if there's any questions, we're glad to answer those, but that is the basically the last business item on your agenda.
What is the pleasure of the board on this?
Move approval, Clarence.
Motion by Mr. Lamb?
Second.
Second by Mr. Grubbs. Any further discussion? Mr. King, would you please call the roll?
George Bryan?
Yes.
Melinda Donegan?
Yes.
Jason Grubbs?
Yes.
Tommy Hicks?
Yes.
Clarence Lamb?
Yes.
Chris Leek?
Yes.
Mo McCray?
Yeah.
Brenda Smith?
Yes.
All right, thank you. Mr. Chairman, that brings us to the staff report. I recognize Desmond first. I think he's going to give you a preview of your December meeting and also another meeting of note.
Thanks, Erin. Next month at the December public meeting, there are two planning board review items and one preliminary subdivision. No zoning items, so everything heard next month can be approved or denied by this board. And the other thing that I want to mention is the draft Winston-Salem pedestrian plan is going to be presented this upcoming Tuesday, the seventeen, six P. M. That is the plan that I mentioned to you all at your work session last month. You can access the presentation at Winston-Salemwalks.com. That's all I have.
Thank you.
Thank you, Desmond. Just one announcement, our community appearance commission, as some of you may know, we basically, they, they host a biennial awards program to recognize folks who have excelled in design and appearance-related issues. We are closely approaching that, and actually tomorrow is the day for that. So Fri- Friday the thirteenth, it is eleven o'clock. We generally do that. We traditionally do that in person at the Old Salem Visitor Center. Due to COVID restrictions this year, we have got a virtual event that will air on the city's YouTube network tomorrow at eleven. Amy Crum can send that link out to the board for anybody who is interested in watching that. We'll share that with you. And the only other thing I will note is we won't see you until December, so everyone have a happy and safe Thanksgiving, and that's all I've got.
Thank you. It's going to be a different Thanksgiving, but it is going to be happy. I can assure you of that. Anything else with good or the order, not?
We have our motion to adjourn.
Happy Thanksgiving, everybody.
Thank you.
Happy Thanksgiving.
Happy Thanksgiving.